Ready for our next interview? I will remind the public here again, if you have comments that you would like to make regarding the interviews, please use the comment cards that are around the City Council Chamber. There won't be any public comment during the interviews, but if you provide those comment cards, I will make sure that City Council receives your feedback. We're ready to present candidate three. As I said in the prior, the candidate will have an opportunity to introduce herself more clearly as a response to question number one, so I won't be providing an introduction. But I would like to recognize the candidate and appreciate her time this evening. And then the mayor will ask the first question, and then each council member will ask a question around the table. Just so you can have some scope of the interview, it will be between about forty to forty-five minutes. There are ten prepared questions. We'll have some very light follow-up afterwards with regard to you, questions for council, and depending on time, a closing statement from you. So with that instruction, I would ask the mayor to begin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Question one, we have your background materials in front of us, but would you please begin by reviewing your professional career path and career goals? Additionally, based on your knowledge and understanding of the city, how are you a good fit for the city, and how is the city a good fit for you?
Well, one, thank you very much for allowing me to interview with you and considering my candidacy for your position. I am a public servant, and my last thirty-five years of my career have been in public service. Like many careers, I stumbled into it after I got out of school. I went to be a tax administrator for Highland Park when Chrysler was still there, and that was exciting to me. I got to meet all of the executives at Chrysler and talk about their income tax, so that was always fun. But that's how I started my career. And then I moved on to Oak Park, the city of Oak Park in Oakland County, and then to Garden City where I've been for the last twenty years. And so definitely, public service is in my blood, and I like it that way. I do think that South Lyon is a really good fit for me in particular because it's very much like the community that I currently serve. It's one of the few cities in Michigan that has a clerk treasurer, and the setup is the exact same, the council, city manager type style. And so it's very, very similar to the city that I currently serve and where I've gotten the majority of my training. I think I'm a good fit for it for that reason. I understand how a community at this size, we're a little bit bigger, but we're what we call a small town, and that's what South Lyon is. And you are constantly being able to balance that hometown feel, that history, that community culture, against the sustainability of a city that you want to continue on for generations. And so I'm very familiar with that ideology, if you will, and that's why I think I'm a good fit.
Thank you. Councilmember Kennedy?
Allison, based on your research and understanding of the city, what do you believe are the most important opportunities and challenges for the city in the near term, and how would you approach these?
There are a couple of priorities that are commonplace among Michigan cities. One of those things are economic development. There's a constant struggle in southeastern Michigan between the major cities and the outlying cities, and making sure that both of those places sustain each other. And so that's one of the priorities that has to be for cities like South Lyon. They have to make sure that they are attracting the kind of businesses that are going to keep them, again, sustainable, and that are going to attract young families. People my age don't sustain cities, but we want to keep people coming in. You want to have generational pool. You don't want them to have to go somewhere else to find the kind of livelihood and family life that they're looking for. So economic development is a priority. And one of the things that I've been focusing on in the last part of my career is the MDEC, the MEDC. They have the Redevelopment Ready Cities, and how you begin to bring those businesses in, and make sure they're the kind of businesses that you want, and make sure that you're the kind of city that they're attracted to. And so that's the number-one probably priority for any city similar in size and stature to South Lyon. Also, you've got to watch those finances. At my base, I am a accountant. I have a master's degree and MBA. That's my strength. And one of the things that I've been able to do in Garden City, not by myself, but in conjunction with a council and an administrative team that works well together, I've been able to make sure that we came through the economic bad times with our teeth intact, and then we're going on to be able to go further from that. And I'd like to help South Lyon. It looks like you've been doing a good job. I've seen the work that you've done with pensions. That's a toughie, and that's a big one. Your debt is minimal, and that's a huge strength. And so those are some of the things, those are the two top priorities that I would like to see.
Councilmember Parisian?
Thank you. Please describe the process you would follow to comprehensively evaluate the current operations of the city and develop innovative improvements.
The first thing anyone that comes into a new place needs to do is listen. You have to find out exactly what's going on. My primary source for that is going to be, especially initially, is going to be the council. I've got to find out what your priorities are, because that's my goal, is to implement the priorities that council as a whole set, and then go forward. The next thing you want to make sure is you talk to your administrative team. And again, I can't emphasize too much, you have to listen. You have to listen to what their issues are, what their priorities are, and what they feel that the challenges for the city are. And then you evaluate those, put those all together, and then you come together and talk about it, and see as a team what the council wants to see, what the administrative team wants you to see, and what the employees want you to see, and what your community, the foundation of everything, wants to see.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kittle?
The city's interested in improving its budget development process, fiscal reporting to the city council, planning for its capital projects, and management of long-term liabilities. Please provide examples from your past experiences that demonstrate the fiscal management experience and your ability to implement financial policies set by the governing body.
My title doesn't quite explain my full job. I am the chief financial officer for the city of Garden City currently. And so my strategy is to make sure, one, that council is aware of what our financial situation is. The way that they do that, the way that I do that, is I report to them on a monthly basis. And sometimes you can give people a lot of paperwork, and it's hard for them, especially if they're not a financial person, to discern what that actually means. So one of the things we do is just go through that paperwork and talk about what we are. And sometimes on a monthly basis, that isn't a deep conversation, but at least quarterly it is. I provide them with quarterly investment reports. I provide them, I am responsible for making, for the entire budget process, the entire audit process, and the day-to-day operations for financial management. I'm the one that the other department heads scourge when they, when I call them and say, "This part is over budget and why," and I have to ask the hard questions. And so, again, that is my strength, that is my kudita.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead.
What do you see as the city manager's role in communicating with the press and the public? And how specifically do you plan to be successful in communicating with the public?
I guess the way I've always operated is, you know, the key word nowadays is transparency and openness. And those are cute little words and everything, but one of the things I'd like is just doing that. On a daily basis, I have people that come into my office just to ask me a question. These are our residents, these are my council members, these are my employees, my colleagues, and I keep that door open. It's easy to say, but it's not always easy to do, because sometimes you have other priorities. But the reason I've been successful is because I do that. If you allow people to voice their concerns, if you answer their questions, if you're there, and that's an important part of it, if you're there, then that means that you can communicate that to them, and that's with your council and to the person who just wanted to come up and find out about dock licenses.
Thank you. All right, councilmember Richards?
The city is interested in improving its success in applying for receiving and administering grants for important city properties, priorities, excuse me. Would you please provide your experience in administering grants, and how you would approach implementing a successful grant application and management plan for the city?
One thing I do encourage people to do is to learn from people who know more than them. And one of the successes that we have in my current community is a grant administrator who has been extremely successful, and I've learned a lot from her. And so I am aware of how you need to write grants so that you're successful in getting them. And Garden City has gotten over five million grants in the last five years for fire equipment, for properties. We are able to, and again, if you are certified as a redevelopment-ready community, that's another way that you can get some grants, especially for the kind of development and property management that you're talking about. And so that would be my goal. I would emulate the expertise of the people that I've learned from.
Question number seven, please describe the process you would utilize to recruit and select talented staff.
My favorite thing to do is educate the staff that I have. If you educate the staff that you have, a lot of times you are able to grow from within, and that's one of the key ways that I do it. My favorite thing to say in a job interview that I'm on your side is that I want you to leave our service knowing more than you came here. If you learn more than what you got when you came here, I'm a success, even if you leave me. Don't want you to leave me, but I understand. And so I encourage tuition reimbursement, I encourage training and mentorship and those types of things. I've also been a member of the professional organizations that sustain clerks and treasurers and city managers, and you get a lot of networking resources from there. And so if I am blessed enough to come to your community, when I leave my old community, I'll be able to pick several different people and say, "I'd like you to be able to replace me." I have a pool of talent, because I know all of these people and have known for, sadly if you're talking about age, but happily if you're talking about a career for thirty-five years.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you. Collaboration and community involvement is important to the city. Please describe how you would plan to professionally collaborate with other organizations in the community, and how you would plan to personally become involved in the community.
When I talk about public service, that's why I like the smaller communities. You can be a part of the community. I don't happen to live in the community that I serve right now, but if you ask anybody, I'm there all the time. I'm at Kiwanis, I'm at all of the events, I volunteer for all of the events. I get very few things, because I want to be a part of the community. And you can't find out what your community needs if you don't, if you're not there. If you're a distant, my old boss used to call it "management" by walking around, but that extends beyond the office. If we're having the chili cook-off, I'm there. If we're having the flea market circus, I'm there, even though I'm not a big pet person. But you're there all the time. Kiwanis is one of my favorite groups to be a part of, just because it's fun, and you get to help young people, and you get to do those types of things. So that's what public service means to me.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Parisian?
If someone were to Google search you, what would they find regarding your past public positions? And is there any information or background you would like to provide regarding the publicity available, publicly available information about you?
Not really. I've Googled myself, and I'm kind of boring, but you'll see a lot of Garden City and Oak Park stuff. You'll see me as president of the Wayne County Treasurers Association. That's pretty much about it. I'm not much of a Facebook person, so you don't get to see that. But I am an adventurer, so you might see pictures of me in different parts of the world, because I love to travel.
Very cool. Thank you.
Councilmember Kittle?
If selected as the next city manager, what do you predict your tenure would be?
My son asked me that, because I would be literally retiring from Garden City. But I'm a workaholic, and so I just think I'm one of those people who'll die if they stop working, so. I don't have any promises. I have an eighty-nine-year-old mom, and, but I have, I'm a workaholic. It's what I enjoy. And so I guess I would just say at least five years. It's hard to imagine working when you're seventy, so at least five years.
Thank you.
What I do believe, though, is that you should always leave your position with someone with a legacy. I hate politicians, just to pick on them, that stay forever and don't have someone who's trained behind them, who is at least capable of taking on what you've done. If you, if you leave your position and nobody knows what the heck is going on, then you haven't done your position well.
Sounds very reasonable.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will have a couple additional questions, but I would like to give the candidate an opportunity, if you have any questions or a question that you would like to address to the mayor about South Lyon and the community at all. This is a two-way process, though it does seem one-way most of the time in an interview this tight. But I'd like to give you that opportunity to ask a question. You're welcome.
Sure. I guess what comes to mind is, can you talk a little bit about what, I've looked at your history, and I know that the city manager position hasn't always been what you wanted it to be. So if you get to create me, what are you looking for? Tell me what you want.
That's a great question. We're looking for someone who can come in here and lead by example, lead in communication, help our staff be better and understand their roles better. We're looking for someone that can communicate with the public here and let them understand what our goals and future, you know, dreams for this community are together. And, you know, just basically, kind of take what we see as a great opportunity to lead this community that's just been on the edge of potential for far too long. And so I know, I know that it can be done, for sure. Just got to fight, just got to get there.
That shared direction helps you get there, it really does. In terms of economic development, what are you looking for? Some communities like to stay as historic as they can be. Some communities want to be the Jetsons. And there's always the everything in between. What do you guys think that you want to see, what do you think your community wants to see this community become?
Well, at least in speaking for our council and the Downtown Development Authority, we've, for the last several years, been focused on redeveloping and, but while keeping the character of our downtown. Now, that's a tough part, because here in South Lyon, we've watched this community grow quite a lot, and so we're still trying to keep that blue-collar, unique downtown while still not turning away options of the future. So it's a tough, it's a tough line to walk at times, and I feel like we've got the team in order here. We just need maybe a little bit of leadership and a little bit of a push of circling the wagons, if I may.
I would enjoy that. What's your built look like? How built are you?
As in, are zoning areas, or what?
Are you mostly, like, Garden City is ninety percent built?
Yes.
And there's just not a lot of places that you can put something?
Yep, that's a great question, and we're very similar to that. We are looking at communities around us in the township, Green Oak Township, Salem Township, that are growing around us, but our 3.7 miles is limited in what we can do. And so every decision that we make within the city is definitely under a microscope.
That's all the questions that I have, except for, I guess, what concerns, you've had a chance to look at the information that I submitted and a little bit of my background. What kind of things are you looking for that you feel that I meet, and where do you think I fall short?
Mr. Patrino?
Yeah, councilmembers are, the mayor's free to answer that, but I'll probably guess that he'll like to punt on it. I have a follow-up question for you, Allison, on that. Can you please describe your current reporting relationship with the city manager and the city council, and the long tenure you've had in that community? And your transition plan, or how you would plan to communicate with the seven-member elected body that you would be directly answering to?
So currently, I report to the city manager. We have a new city manager, he's been there about four months, and so this is a learning process for us to him and him to us. And so, but I still have, I've known most of my council for twenty years or more, and so we still have a very open relationship. Our department heads are easy to talk to, our council and the city manager, and so we have quite a cohesive group. But as far as the transition is concerned, when you take a new position, you really have to be committed to the people that you've now made that commitment to. But I do wish to leave my community in as good a shape as possible, so I'm hoping that they will, that I'll be able to spend at least a little time making sure that that transition is available. No matter what, I'm going to be there for the community that I'm leaving. We've been good together, and I'm never going to leave them in a bind. So if I have to go over there on Sundays and midnights, I'll just go over there on Sunday midnights. If you guys need me faster than I'm, then they can let me go.
Can you expound on reporting to a group of seven and managing those relationships as a direct employee of a city council as opposed to through a manager position? And how you would, I think you have experience from what I've read in your, in your information of an interim position where you did have that opportunity. Can you explain kind of how you manage that part of a major priority for a city council, or city manager position?
The easiest way, and the way that I deal with council now is, when I'm in a room, is email is the fun thing. That way I make sure I get everybody, I don't leave anybody out, and I try to make sure that I remember and that council remembers that I work for council as a whole, and I make sure that they make, they are aware that I work for them as a whole. And so I email a lot, just so that everybody has the same information at the same time, but that doesn't mean we don't have conversations with individuals. We have to have a relationships, we have to have a relationship as a whole, we have to have a relationship as individuals, and so we go on that. I am very honest and open person. If I disagree with something that someone does or says, I say that, but I do understand who I work for and what my responsibility is. And so I think when everybody understands their position, I think that that's a good way to make sure that you are doing what you're supposed to do and you're working for the body. Does that answer?
It does, thank you. At this time, I'd like to offer you three to five minutes, if you'd like, to provide a statement to city council of your interest in the position, and something you'd like to leave them with about yourself as they go forward and make their next decision in this process.
I guess what I'd like to tell you is that as I get further and further in this process, I am pleasantly surprised by the similarities between the city that I serve now and South Lyon. And I'm looking forward to going to the next step. I'd like to be more involved with the direction of the city, and I think that the city manager position is a way to allow me to do that. I want to be an influence to a community. And if South Lyon sees me as a person that can help them accomplish their goals, that will give me a great purpose, it really will. I don't want to overemphasize it, but I believe in public service, I do. And what that means to me is, I'm a clerk. And one of the things that clerks like to notice is that we get a lot of voters for presidential elections. We get a lesser amount, but still a lot more for statewide elections. We get this many voters for local elections, and, but local is what affects your day-to-day life. Local is what changes how your child grows up. Local is what makes your community thrive or not. And so I love being a part of that local mentality. I love being a part of the people that say, "If I start a neighborhood stabilization program in South Lyon, the way I did in Garden City, it's going to change your neighborhood, your street. I'm going to take a house that's been an eyesore for ten years, and I'm going to change it into something that the neighbor's going to come out and say to me, 'Oh, my God, I'm so glad you did that. I just hated that for so long, and it really makes a difference.'" That's making a difference in someone's life, and that, that just makes me happy. It really does. And I like people who think that way, I like other public servants. So I'm looking forward to this. I am looking forward to being in a community that appreciates what a group of people, even if we're not a million people, if we're just a few thousand people, we can still do it. If we're just the 3.7 miles, we can change our 3.7 miles, and that's important to me. And if that's important to you, I think we will be a good match. I really do.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time this evening. I will escort the candidate out. I will see if our next candidate is available, and then I will let you know in a moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you, Allison.
Rose Thompson. Rose Thompson, is he?
I'm in the hallway. I thought it was outside the hallway.
Say it one more time. Oh, I see. Okay, Rose Thompson.
I think it's okay, because I feel like they're very articulate.
Oh, yeah, they're all great, yeah. And...
I like that, too.
Bruce Thompson. Bruce Thompson. Is he? Say it one more time. Oh, I see. Okay. Bruce Thompson. Oh, yeah, they're all great, yeah.
Excellent. Very cool. Well, I appreciate you coming up and introducing yourself. Um, any relation to Robert Breitman? Really? That's my doctor. Interesting. Very cool, a nice man. Oh, is it? Oh. Very cool, so you're a Novi?
Yes.
Excellent. Well, it's a pleasure to meet you. Thank you. Yes, yes, thank you. Uh, Mr. Breitman? He'll remember me as Mary Dodakis. He won't remember me as Mary Parisian. He'll know me as Mary Dodakis. Greek girl.
Good evening.
Hi.
How are you?
Very well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the nod towards me is a good hint. I appreciate, uh, the candidate joining us this evening. I want to remind the public that's in the room that we do have comment cards around, uh, council chambers. If you have any comments that you'd like to provide to city council during the interview process, please use the comment card, and you can leave it up at this table, um, and they will be shared with city council. There won't be public comment during the interviews. I very much encourage you to use the comment cards if you'd like to share your views with city council this evening. Consistent with the interviews we've, we've been having this evening, our timeline's about forty to forty-five minute maximum for the candidates. There's ten questions planned during that time, and then there may be a couple additional, depending on how our timing is. I will not introduce the candidate formally. The first question is, sets up to allow the candidate to introduce themselves and their qualifications. With that, I'd like to turn it over to the mayor, who'll ask the first question, and then each council member will ask a question after that.
Thank you. We have your back, background materials in front of us, but would you please begin by reviewing your professional career path and career goals? Additionally, based on your knowledge and understanding of the city, how are you a good fit for the city, and how is the city a good fit for you?
Okay, well, thank you, and nice meeting you. I've been with the city of Westland for the last twenty-four years. Um, I started there, um, after working in the city of Monroe. That was actually my, uh, first paying job out of, uh, of college. Uh, I was a planner down in the city of Monroe for, for two, two and a half years, so I got my feet wet down there. Uh, it was a nice community, and, um, just gave me the opportunity to move ahead, and so move ahead I did, and, and, uh, Westland was the landing spot. I started there in nineteen ninety-five and, and, um, started as a planner there. I was, uh, I guess lucky enough to be working with a director who was able to teach me a lot, um, but also was, was close to retirement. And so it allowed me the opportunity to kind of spread my wings there, um, and become, uh, the director of, of the planning department there in a very short period of time, uh, around the year two thousand. Under a couple, a few mayors, I, I learned a lot of things, um, and under this current mayor, um, he's really allowed me a, a wide breadth of, of opportunities. Um, as you can see from, uh, from the resume, I, I started as the planning director, uh, under the previous mayor, um, and then, um, in two thousand eleven, I took over the building department. Uh, it was privatized. It was a bit of a surprise, uh, but it was a good surprise, right? As, as your career grows, you wanna grow, and, and it gave me the opportunity to, uh, to learn a lot of things, right, about the building department and, and how another part of the community works outside of, you know, the planning, the arm of the city. Throughout that experience, um, the mayor was obviously confident enough in me to, um, allow me to take on the economic development duties, actually, um, four times. Um, up until very recently, the, the mayor's hired a new economic development director, and I'm currently transitioning him into, into that position. But again, um, you know, it, it just gave me the opportunity, it's, uh, planning and economic development, they work hand in hand, right? And planning and building and economic development, they all kind of work together, um, to, to make things happen. And so, um, I, I do, um, appreciate that opportunity, as you can see as well, uh, where I work right now, we do have a Downtown Development Authority, uh, we have a Tifa district, so, uh, that allowed me to work real close with DDAs and, and their budgeting and their projects. Our DDA has, uh, had a, a number of projects, um, recently, uh, they started off with streetscape back in the day, and, and they've been working on a lot of park projects and, uh, really community-oriented type projects to, um, to help keep our community growing forward. So it's really kind of the progression I'm looking at, right? When, when, when South Lyon came up as a position, you know, I'm a hundred and twenty days from potential retirement at the city of Westland. And so what do I look at, uh, you know, in the position I'm at? Do I look at retiring and then finding some job and then just kind of riding it out, or, or do I continue to grow, right? Do I find a community that, that needs growth, that needs leadership, that wants somebody that'll grow with them, somebody that will be part of the community? And I've been fortunate enough, um, in Westland, um, though, you know, we are, my wa- my wife, my family, we are part of that community, and what I do is part of that community. So I'm, I'm just looking at that, right? Looking at finding a new place to land and, and being part of something worthwhile and, and helping a community grow.
Thank you, Bruce.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you. Based on your research and understanding of the city, what do you believe are the most important opportunities and challenges for the city in the near term, and how would you approach these?
Well, I think, like most communities in, in the state of Michigan, state share revenues are down, right? So there's a, a budget challenge, I think, for most communities. You know, looking at your budget, um, obviously, you have a, a fairly decent, um, you know, budget, um, surplus, which is a lot more than a lot of other communities, but that doesn't mean you take that and you, and you ride that out, right? You have to look at, um, different options as, you know, tightening the belt, or, or looking at how you might, uh, run different things. That, that's really kind of, I don't wanna go too much into that, right? Because I'd have to sit down with each of the, of the directors and say, "Okay, what is, what is your goal? What, what do you need this year? What do you need five years from now?" And it would be the same, um, you know, with, with all of you. If managing a city, you know, the elected officials, uh, have, have some of the greatest stake in this community. They're elected to keep this city moving forward, and, and so it's, it's really a collaborative type of direction that, that you need to go in and sit down with everybody and figure out, you know, what, what's, what's the best way to deal with any one department or the city as a whole in moving it forward. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Councilmember Parisian?
Please describe the process you would follow to comprehensively evaluate the current operations of the city and develop innovative improvements.
Okay, well, first and foremost, obviously, I'd have to sit down with each of the directors, uh, get to know them first personally, and then sit down with them and find out where have they been and where are they going. Um, you know, uh, being a, um, a manager, you first have to understand the people and where they're coming from, right? I'm sure they're all seasoned professionals, and that's the way you have to treat them, right? You have to look at these professionals and treat them with respect, and listen to what they have to say, and, and look at the patterns that, that their departments have been going through. Um, I've certainly learned a lot where I'm at, and, and, uh, you know, from my community that I'm working now, from watching other communities, as to, you know, what, what possibilities are there, right? Um, again, I don't wanna speculate as to what that might be until you really roll up your sleeves and, and get in up to your elbows. There's lots and lots and lots of ideas that I can think of right now, but, you know, perhaps they might not be that applicable without, again, really understanding the, the meats and bones of the departments and the directors. So I just would say that would be the first thing, is take that opportunity to, to meet them, know them, and, and, and learn what they know.
Councilmember Kivell?
Uh, the city's in, interested in improving its budget development process, fiscal reporting to the city council, planning for its capital projects and management and its long-term liabilities. Please provide examples from your experience that demonstrate the fiscal management experience and your ability to implement financial policies set by the governing board.
Well, I, I think one of the, the most important things that, that we did as a community, and this was a, a few years ago, maybe five years ago, when state char- shared revenues really started dropping off and, and costs were going up and revenues weren't being generated because of, of, you know, tax, you know, shortages or not, not getting the taxes that we need, we sat down as a community in a, in a, in kind of an informal session. Obviously, the council, the mayor, certain directors were there, and invited the public, and, and looked at what everybody's long-term goals were, uh, from a standpoint of, of budgeting. You know, what's really important? What do we need to do? You know, what are the forecasts for what we can expect from a standpoint of revenue, state shared revenues? Um, you know, what projects there, that were in the books? And then look forward and say, "Okay, how do we address this? How do we keep the ship going straight," right? And, and, um, you know, make sure that our community stays in the black, if you will, next year, five years, ten years from now. And what that then did is implemented a, implemented a process where, um, they started doing projected budgets three years, five years out. Um, you know, just trying to get a better handle on, especially with capital improvement projects, right? In an older community like Westland, um, infrastructure's aged, um, you know, pays the ratings on roads and the utilities and the storm and the water, they all have to be rated, and you have to keep your eye on them, and you have to figure at some point, this road's gonna have to be repaired, and this sanitary sewer's gonna have to be replaced. And, and so it really just kind of got everybody together and kind of focused on, you know, how, how do we attack these things? How do we logically go about it for the next five years? And, and it's been very successful, and the, and the mayor continues to present, you know, five-year budget plans, um, to the city council. You know, and I think probably the, the, I don't know how I can say this, the, the best way to do it is, is in the open, right? Um, even, even from the governor on down, you know, it's transparency. It's, it's sitting down with, with all of you, and, uh, just like I said, with directors, right? Understanding who they are and what they want and what their department needs are. It's, it's also sitting down with the decision-makers and making sure that we're all on the same page, that, that you have the information from the, the city administrator or manager that you need to make the decisions that you need to make to keep this city moving forward.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kurzweil?
Thank you. Uh, what do you see as the city manager's role in communicating with the press and the public? And how specifically do you plan to be successful in communicating with the public?
Well, I, I think that, um, I've dealt a lot with, with the press, so we can start there, um, and, uh, you know, that, that's not really a problem. I think one of the things that I pride myself on being on is professional, right? And the press are professionals, and you treat them like professionals, and you act professional in front of them. And does it always work out best? No, there are times when, you know, the press can beat you up, or, or they wanna beat you up, right? But the press is also a good tool for a community, right? Is, is making them aware of all the good things that are happening and, and making sure that they focus on those good things, and, and using that as a tool to help promote this community. I think that that's an important, you know, part of, of dealing with the press. So... Did that answer the question?
It's your answer.
Okay.
Councilmember Richards?
Uh, the city is interested in, uh, improving its success in applying for, receiving and administering grants for important city priorities. Could you please provide your experience in administering grants and how you would approach implementing a successful grant application and management plan for the city?
Sure. Um, I actually just recently did obtain a grant from SEMCOG, uh, the city of Westland. We just went through the master planning process. Um, and so we have a brand-new master plan, and as part of that master plan, um, there are action items, right? Um, a, an up-to-date master plan isn't just a book that sits on a shelf, like some of them used to be back in the eighties and nineties, and that, the, the consultants come up with funding sources and, and plans on how to move different objectives for the master plan. One of those for us was a, um, a non-motorized plan, so pedestrian and bike plan. And so that first step was, um, an education program. And lo and behold, not even before, honestly, the master plan was formally adopted by the Planning Commission, but after the council took their swing at it and, and just before the Planning Commission, a, a grant came up through SEMCOG, uh, for that education program. So we applied for it, and we got it. And so in twenty nineteen, we will be implementing that program, um, and creating a yearly, basically, education program, a, a Bike Week, uh, where people go out and, uh, they learn what they need to know about biking safely and walking safely. It'll involve the police department. It's not a huge grant, but, you know, it requires administration, just like any other grant. Um, and, you know, we'll, uh, be working, I think, it, with the Parks and Recreation Department is, is the goal, and working together with them at implementing that grant. And then, you know, just following through both with SEMCOG and with MDOT, uh, because MDOT's involved in this, on, uh, you know, reporting how the money is spent and, and how the program is going. And that's really, right, the basis of every grant, right? Is finding grants that apply to what it is that you wanna do, um, making sure that you've got grant matching funds. In this case, it's eighty-twenty, and, and, um, so we're actually gonna be, um, asking the DDA to help us, uh, you know, move this program along. And, you know, for whatever departments, uh, you know, there's RAP grants that, that our police department, our fire department take advantage of every year, um, our Department of Public Services as well. So again, it's, it's a matter sort of sitting down with the departments and finding out what their needs are, researching the grants that are out there, right? They're out there, there's a limited amount, there's no, you know, magic umbrella that opens up and gives you whatever grants you want. You, you have to target what you're doing and target what you're looking for, but administering grants is, is like anything else, right? There's, there's requirements, and you follow those requirements, and then you follow through.
Question number seven. Please describe the process you would utilize to recruit and select talented staff.
Well, assuming that I would need to, right? Um, again, I don't know the staff personally here, but, um, you know, I've, I've worked with a lot of people, and I've made a lot of connections. Um, that, that comes with doing what you do for a, a very long period of time, you know, twenty-five years plus for me. So, you know, that, that's really, I guess, kind of, of the basis of it. I mean, I'd have to work through, you know, personnel, um, but, um, certainly I know a lot of resources out there, right? And, and, and resources that you have as a community to your advantage, like the MMRA, um, you know, and MML, um, where those are direct resources that you can help, you know, find people or get, get, get the word out, or, um, you know, just like the MML, that's how I found out about this job, right? Um, there, there are different avenues that, that you can take advantage of through people you know, organizations that you're involved with. And again, it's just, you know, I've hired a number of people. It's really kind of the same thing, right? They're people. You just sit down with them and, and find out who they are, and, you know, sometimes I interview people, and they don't, they don't have necessarily the, the resume that one or another might have, uh, but they're the kind of person that, that fits the bill, right? They're, they're personable, they're customer service oriented, and, and even though they may not have the experience that one or another might, they just seem to be that right fit. And I think I've been very successful in, in, in bringing that type of people, and they're people that you can work with, right? People that are, you know, one hundred percent customer oriented, um, because things can be learned, right? I don't know everything. I'm gonna learn. You know, if you hire me as the city manager, there's a lot I have to learn. Um, but, you know, that's part of being a professional as well, and so, um, you know, you, you can, you can read that from people, too, when you interview, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you. Collaboration and community involvement is important to the city. Please describe how you would plan to professionally collaborate with other organizations in the community, and how you would plan to personally become involved in the community.
Well, collaborative is, is a good word, and that, that is something I take very seriously. I, I work with so many different organizations, both within the community, directly, the DDA, the Tifa, um, but the, in the Chamber of Commerce, you know, when I'm working the economic development arm, but all of the other parts of the community, um, you know, we just, um, work with the, um, Lions Club and built a brand-new pavilion in, in our, our central city park, and it turned out a very beautiful project, right? Um, so, you know, I think collaborative is something that goes from bottom to top, right? You have to be collaborative with the people that you manage, but you also... but you also have to be collaborative with, with the people that you serve, council, the community, those organizations. So I'd really be open, honestly, to, to working with everybody and, and to whatever extent they need. It's, it's really just, again, a matter of, of looking at what we can do as a community together, right? All the different organizations, whether they're service organizations, whether this council, we all have the same goal in mind, right? And that's to move the community forward. And so I'd just be willing to, you know, open to working with everybody. And, and I certainly believe that I can. Thank you.
Councilmember Perezian?
Thank you. If someone were to Google search you, what would they find regarding your past public positions? And is there any information or background you would like to provide regarding the publicly available information about you?
I don't think I've ever Googled myself, so I'm not 100% sure. But, you know, I, again, I'm, I pride myself on being very professional, very ethical. In fact, if you look at the, the, the planning profession and the code of ethics that they have, it's a very high set of code of standards. And so, you know, it's just become who I am to be that way, right? And so I think if you Google me, that's what you're gonna find. You're gonna find, you know, professional person that, that's very straightforward. And really, that's it. You know, whenever I deal with the public, when I deal with the council, when I deal with the press, I'm going to be 100% professional. And that's gonna reflect, I think, on, on how I'm viewed. So...
Councilmember Kibble?
If selected as the next city manager, what do you predict your tenure would be?
Well, I hope I could stay here as long as you'd want me. Again, I'm, I'm not looking, I'm looking for a new place to land, right? I, I wanna be somewhere and I wanna make a difference. One of the reasons I stayed in Westland for as long as I did is because I could make a difference. And, and when you're in a place for a long period of time, you tend to be one of the go-to people, right? And so that's one of the luxuries that I've had where I'm at is that when, when somebody doesn't know what to do, when somebody doesn't know the answer to the question, they go, "Go ask Bruce." You know, and if I don't know the answer, that's fine, I'm not going to know every answer. But then I can at least direct people where they might be able to find that answer, whether it's local, whether it's the county, whether it's a private organization. And, you know, just, again, the more I'm involved, I think the longer I'm gonna wanna be here, right? I don't see myself in a year or two or five years wanting to go somewhere else. I wanna be in a place where I can stay and where I, my work is appreciated and where I can be part of a community.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a couple additional questions, but these interviews are generally one-sided and the council gets to know a lot more about you than you get to ask questions. And that's just the format we use. But I will give you an opportunity to ask a question or two. I'll direct it at the mayor if you'd like about South Lion, and then I'll have a couple additional questions, if you have any.
Well, you know, honestly, I, James, I really don't. I've done a lot of research. I ran through your budget from first page to last. I know this community very well. My, my sister and her husband raised her two kids here. I've got a lot of friends and colleagues that live in this area. You know, I'm just real excited to be here. It's one of the, the fastest-growing areas in, in the metro Detroit area, and who wouldn't wanna be part of that? And so, you know, I guess the only questions I'll have is if you hire me. And again, that's sitting down and finding out, what do you want, right? What do you want from me? What do you want South Lion to be? You know, but right now, sir, no, I, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with my understanding of South Lion and...
Great. And I'll ask, I'll clarify maybe a little bit for the public and then I'll follow up with a question. The city you currently serve in has a strong mayor form of government, and it probably reflects in your answers when you reference to serving the mayor and working so closely with the mayor as opposed to a city manager form. With that as foundation, can you describe kind of your role in working with an elected official as your, your answer to, and then how you would transition to an appointed official by a body of seven and how you would work with the, the elected officials as a whole?
Sure. I deal with elected officials every day. All those council members have my cell phone number. If they need something, they know they can get ahold of me 24/7. You know, that's just being part of a community, right? I don't work nine to five. And, and as you said, I work for a strong mayor. That mayor doesn't expect us to work just nine to five. And, and that's fine, right? I mean, that's the way it should be, right? If you're serving a community, you don't just serve a community from here to here. It, it ends up being more than that. So I'm extremely comfortable with, with, you know, serving elected officials, answering questions. In fact, I think that, you know, becoming a, a city manager versus being just an administrator, I think probably the most important thing...I'm a very organized person, right? I like to be prepared. You know, I said, I, I looked at your budget, I, I researched South Lion. Being prepared for me means also making sure that the elected officials are prepared. So I can say to you that you can always expect, if you hire me, that I will be prepared when I'm sitting here and you have things to decide on. And I will always make sure that you are prepared so that you have the proper information to make the decision that you need to make. And, and so, you know, obviously, being an administrator of three departments versus being a city administrator, it's a little more complicated, right? You've gotta learn more, you've gotta know more. But I still think it's basically that same tenet, that you, you just have to be prepared and you have to work together. You know, will, do I always have the same, you know, do I always get along with every elected official at everything? No, we don't always have the same view on things. We don't always agree on things. But if everybody can agree to disagree, but still move ahead professionally with the understanding that not everybody agrees with 100% of everything, then that, that to me is a great working relationship. And, and that's something that I would look to.
I'd like to follow up on one of the questions, and it was the budgetary question. You provided an answer with regard to the overall process in your current community. Can you talk your departmental preparation of your own departmental budget and the detail that, that goes into preparing your budget and the process you have for your department budget? And maybe reflect on, on that as you would approach that for the City of South Lion?
Sure. You know, as I said, I started as, in one department and I've worked my way through three. And, and, you know, I don't prepare budgets by myself. We have a finance director, we have a budget director. And then we sit down and, and, you know, look at last year and, and project out this, you know, what's gonna happen the rest of this year. And then, you know, obviously, you know, prepare the budget for the next year. So it's not something I, I do on my own. I, I think that'll probably fall under the, I'm always learning, you know? When, when you start something new, you're, you're gonna have to, to learn a little bit more and, and, you know, get, wrap your arms around something that's probably just a little bit bigger than, than what I'm used to. But, but really, it's all the same, right? It's, it's the same process. And, and the state's requirements for managing budget are the same, no matter what community you're in or what level the budget is or what size that budget is. So, you know, I, I'm certainly capable, I think, of, of handling it. Again, I've, I've looked at your budget and, and I, I think that I've got a good handle on it. Might I need help? Sure. You know, but again, you have resources, right? Plant Moran is a good resource. We work with Plant Moran on a regular basis as well. So I've, really, the difference is now I'm part of it, right? Then soon, hopefully, I get to be it, you know, tag your it. And, and now it's time to, to, to manage it and take hold of it and, and run it. So I, I'm perfectly capable of doing that. But again, you know, if there's hiccups or whatever, you, you have professionals, right? You have department heads whose, whose job it is to tell you where you're at, right? And, and, and project out what they need. And, and you work together as a team, just like preparing a budget and presenting it to a council, you, you work together as a team. So I'm sure I've got some things to learn, but, but I've been knee-deep in, in budgets for, for quite some time. Our budgets get, are small from one end, like our Economic Development Department's a very small department, to our Tifa, who brings in probably about $15.5 million a year and has multiple projects going on, right? So it, I've kind of have a variety of budgets that I deal with. Some privatize, like the Building Department. I took that over in 2011. I was the planning director at the time. And the city actually privatized the Building Department. So I wasn't a building official, I wasn't a building inspector. Mayor just came to me and said, "Hey, guess what? You're in charge of the Building Department. Okay, well, what does that mean?" Well, they privatized it, right? So the budget in that particular case went from a whole bunch of payroll and, and benefits and all those things to basically a professional services line item, right? And then it's managed daily, you know, through, through the department. So, you know, things change too, right? And so you have to adapt to, to those changes. And changes will probably occur in this budget for this community in the future. And, you know, we'll just roll with punches, right? Change when you need to change. Change is a good thing. So...
Thank you. I'd like to give you, Bruce, maybe three to five minutes, a, a statement that you can make to the city council of your interest in the position and something that, that, that you would like them to leave with as they go through this process of your interest and, and expectation for, for going through the process.
Sure. Well, I do appreciate the opportunity to, to be at this point. I, I really do. I, I, again, when, when the South Lion position came up, I was very excited. My wife was very excited. We're actually looking at moving out this way anyway, one way or the other. Our family has grown. We're gonna be empty nesters here really soon. And again, we were just kind of looking for a place to land. And I, I think it just kinda came up kinda timely for us, right? Again, I, I'd spoken about looking for a place to grow from a professional standpoint, looking to be a part of a community. So I think from both a professional standpoint, I'm, I'm certainly capable. I would hope that you think I am. But from a personal standpoint, I, I think that this is exactly the, the kind of place that I wanna be and that my wife wants to be and we wanna be a part of. So being part of the community is very important. It's important to me as a professional. It's important to me as a person. I think it, it shows people that you have a stake, right? In Westland, you know, we bought our first house there and my kids went to school there and our second house was there and we lived there and we shopped there and I worked there. And, and people look at that and they say, "This person has a stake in this community," right? And then you build trust and then you become part of a team and, and all of those things. And so it's, I know I've kind of set all of these things up till now, but that, that's, I guess, really the heart of it, is I think that this is a wonderful opportunity for both myself and my family. And I'd really like the opportunity to, to be part of yours.
Well, thank you very much for your time this evening and, and your commitment to this process.
Thank you.
You're complimented for getting to this point and we'll be in touch shortly in terms of the next stages. And we appreciate your involvement. I will escort the candidate out. I will see if we have a break or a next candidate momentarily.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you for playing for the show.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir, mayor. Good to meet you, sir.
Good to meet you.
Thank you very much. Nice meeting you.
Nice meeting you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Do you need a space?
You just got a straight line, don't you?
I know. You're messing with my OCD, okay? Rest of my OCD.
You got another candidate right now?
I hope you don't have to take a break.
I need to exercise my leg. It's getting stiff a little, I tell you.
Oh, boy.
What time do you have to scoot?
Somebody that I have seemed to be perfect because if he came in or she came in, oh, he came in. Able to make it.
Do we have a few minutes, Dave? A few minutes?
Yeah.
I know.
I'm moving along pretty quick.
We need a food truck in here.
Demands of having to do new type things. It turns out it's hard. It helps. And the demand for much more high-level vision. Where do we go? What is the problem? Not having enough time for people.
Yeah.
And I think we all have our jobs.
I, I think, I know what this means.
The strategy is not going to work.
Well, I had a very different perspective or opinion.
He is much more regional, focused, developed.
I'd like to see you a little more, show a little more dynamic.
And I think that's something that if somebody was sent back home, then it's gonna be worse. And then, I'm really opposed to that guy. She didn't do interviews with him. She just didn't count the blame of managers on his own. So this is...
I didn't get what they were talking about, but I didn't, I didn't know now. I just loved the script because I didn't see what she was talking about. I just died. She was, she was...
You ever get a chance to watch it, I think you can...
Need somebody who has more experience because somebody who's managed a combination of tests has been, has been had far more experience and had issues. Oh, yeah. Eight hundred and thirty thousand. That's what I had.
You know, one of your folks services, whatever.
I know.
That seemed to be a strong.
He's a bunch of guys.
Is that what you said?
Yeah, yeah.
And I'll tell you what I liked about you. If you're perfect, he's been doing. He needs something.
That would be right as well.
The chief financial officer, he wants to move to the city state.
But he did, he was.
May have been, yeah.
That was. Oh, my.
You think? No? The problem is, is that I'm really particular about my legal work. I just don't know if I can trust, how do I put it, enemy? It's like when a partner says, you handle this deposition. I just think it's pretty there.
So we're struggling. Got a couple of returns and now you didn't.
The work ethic.
Yes. Very much so. Ten minutes. I just want to say.
I just want to say.
Same thing with you. You're working. You're the most ten hours.
Freshman attorneys doesn't make it to the.
Here's what I did. I interviewed two attorneys. I thought, let me see what's up there. It was a story. I was just discussing. This guy was not quite representing what he said, which they could do. He makes a lot of contract agreements. So I just, I don't know. So I said, oh, my, here's my work as a attorney, we need to find it. So he's down at the steering session. And he said, the interviews were, they came, they needed these questions with me. They're supposed to be pretty sort of quiet. They're trying to. Oh, I'm kind of used to this a little bit. I just think it's.
Well, I think that's where, that's the kind of issue that they, you know, I agree with Jay. I saw him first time. And his answer was, but he wants to get the kinds of culture. So he's kind of figured out how do you get. So he's like, what's the question? If he asks, well, it's like, you always go, no, we get. I think he's got good ideas so far, but I have something about how to get. For heaven's sakes.
Yeah, three hundred dollars an hour.
Oh, that's why, for heaven's sakes.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, Matt, well, Rose didn't make it, I guess.
This is my daughter that's on WNIC.
First time, yes, I'm lying, but. Grand marshal, that's the word.
Isn't that hilarious?
That is the word, I could not.
That was perfect.
Think of it for the life of me.
Chelsea came in, she was, of course, she's, Chelsea lives on Whipple, so she came in to pay her water bill yesterday. So she was. That was her talking with Judy. And, or actually, she was talking about her talking with Judy. Yeah. So Judy, she's walking out and Judy says, hey, it's a shout out on an IC commercial.
She did it?
Yeah. Chelsea, I gave her all the names because she came by the house. Paid it and she said, she explained what the deal was and I didn't get her name. So I just wrote all of her names down.
No, I didn't see it.
All of them.
Passing out. Oh, yeah, they have one pot.
The policy.
Coopers, yes. Yeah, they do that so they don't get.
That's so crazy.
Because they odor.
Sorry you didn't kill anybody.
There's no reason I couldn't do that.
Yeah, I had to get up and walk around, drizzle outside. I'm running out of gas, so I can tell. But I'll be, I'll be okay. What I do, take my hand off, I guess. I'm sorry Rose didn't make it. Is this going to be recorded at this time?
It was scheduled for seven thirty, but James called and said, if you're in the area.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate the city council's time this evening. We are at our fifth candidate, our last candidate for the evening. As I mentioned before to the public that's here, if you have any comments that you would like to make about the candidates or the process, please feel free to use one of the comment cards that are around the city council chambers. There will not be any public comment during the interviews, but the city council would appreciate any feedback you have. If you write that on the comment card, that will be shared with them and please bring it to this table at the end of the meeting. We will go right into the questioning. The first question does allow the candidate an opportunity to introduce themselves, so I won't be doing an introduction. For the candidate, the mayor will ask the first question and then each council member will ask a succeeding question. We have ten questions. We have about forty minutes time limit and so that'll help you with your cadence on your answers. Mayor?
Thank you. Thanks for being here, Paul.
Thank you.
We have your background materials in front of us, but would you please begin by reviewing your professional career path and career goals? Additionally, based on your knowledge and understanding of the city, how are you a good fit for the city and how is the city a good fit for you?
We can see from the background, I've actually worked in municipal government now for thirty years. I originally started in Rochester Hills where I worked my way up from engineering department and obtained my business degree and then later on obtained my master's degree in major in public administration. I knew when I was working within municipal government, I had the want to make a difference within the community. I enjoyed working within government. When I started in engineering department, I handled the position that nobody else really liked. I was handling complaint investigations and it was because I enjoyed it. I enjoyed to be able to work out and solve problems with those individuals. Some people didn't like it. They were glad to push those things off and give my business card out to people here. Talk to Paul when he comes in, he'll be glad to help you out. But it gave me the opportunity to meet people within the community. It gave me the opportunity to learn a lot about the community and learn the residents. I did live within that community at that given time. I enjoyed it. I often said, preparing myself for this position or as city manager, I often learned more from bad managers than good managers because I learned what not to do when I knew I was going to get in that position. And sometimes unfortunately, people rise to a management position and aren't that good. And I knew that I wanted to be a city manager and that's why I set my career path the way I did. I worked with an engineering department and public services department. They were combined departments later on. I worked within the assessing department after I got my bachelor's degree or while I was getting my bachelor's degree. The city tapped me to work on the strategic planning process, which was a two-year pro, two-year project for a city of about seventy thousand people that identified the plans for the, for the community in the future. At that particular time, I learned more about capital improvements and learned planning to work with each one of the departments and setting those goals for the community for the future. So I moved on and obtained my first position in the village of Ortonville. It's probably one of the smallest communities within Oakland County of only fifteen hundred people. But when you work in a community like that, you tend to learn how to do everything. You have to work on budgets, you work, help people with the elections. It was even one time when our DPW, we only had three people, one person was off. We got an April snowstorm and they gave me a fifteen minute training method and I learned how to plow snow that day and I never operated a plow, a plow truck since then. I'm not sure if there's a reason or they talked to any other DPW departments, but those sort of departments and when you work in those communities, you learn to chip in. And I think it prepared for me for each excessive level and different positions that I've always taken because I've always moved on based upon my own accord. I've never been let go from a position. When I worked in Garden City for a few years, I worked in community development department and ran that department, which also included the DDA and also the economic development. That allowed me to learn more about the master plan and planning and zoning, zoning board of appeals issues and allowed me to take that knowledge on to additional municipalities where I worked. And because of that, I do feel that I am a good fit for this community. I feel I've looked at items as far as that you see that are important within this community. I think I prepared myself for that and I believe that because this is a tremendous opportunity with a community with a great housing stock, historic charm to it, good business community, my background within the DDA, my experience working within the different, with the different communities, specifically within Oakland County. I've lived within Oakland County for thirty years. So I think working, knowing people, whether it's at the county executive's office, whether it's people within community development, whether it's people within Oakland County equalization or the sheriff's office or whoever it may be, I think that provides me a unique experience to be able to know, know those people and be a good fit for the community.
Thank you.
Excuse me, this hasn't been used yet, has it?
No.
This is mine, right?
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Thank you. Based on your research and understanding of the city, what do you believe are the most important opportunities and challenges for the city in the near term and how would you approach these?
I think working in the community with, one of the first things you have to do is try to set a plan for the future. And one I think is the capital improvement plan. I did not see one that was online. I did not see a road improvement plan. I don't know if there's been a water rate analysis or sewer rate analysis done or a pacer rating study done for the city to determine the road improvement plan, but I believe those components, combining it with the DDA plan, the Parks and Rec master plan, working on a multi-year forecasting budget will help prepare the city for the future so then, so they would know where capital expenditure should be, not only for the upcoming year or short term, but also long term. Some of the things in reading online, I think it's important for collaboration to occur within the community, not only with the residents and businesses, but also with the city hall staff, working with council members and training. And so everybody has a clear defined goal to try to set the proper culture for city hall or for this municipality in, in moving forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Parisian?
Please describe the process you would follow to comprehensively evaluate the current operations of the city and develop innovative improvements.
I think part of it becoming accustomed to the plan, so I guess I would start with kind of almost as day one, working with staff, reviewing manuals, reviewing budgets, meeting with department heads, looking over union contracts, getting the opportunity meet, to meet with the business community, perhaps some members of the faith-based organizations, learning more about the downtown, the businesses, because I think it's important that I get a good feel and do a lot, lot more reading than I already have on the community and getting a chance to meet people so they know, at least from my perspective, it's important as far as being a manager, it's see and be seen, whether it's at a community event and whether it's showing that I'm partnering with the rest of the staff. And whether it's the car show that you had this weekend and helping DPW take down the barricades that happened with the event or taking part in learning more about the officers or the rest of the staff. I've often, the approach that I've had is being one-on-one with people is, is the best approach. When you have that, you can afford that opportunity, it's great. Some of the best respect that I've ever gotten, gotten from being a manager is working with people one-on-one and some of the best respect I got from working with police officers is riding with them at night. I remember riding with them one morning on Christmas morning with the police officers. I got more respect when doing that, so they learned who I was and that I wanted to be a part of them, a part of their department. They saw morally who I was. They learned that they could trust me. They learned where I was coming from and they knew the type of person that I was and I got a chance to know them a little bit more, one-on-one.
Councilmember Kibble?
The city is interested in improving its budget development process, fiscal reporting to the city council, planning for its capital projects and management and its long-term liabilities. Please provide examples from your past experience that demonstrate your fiscal management experience and your ability to implement financial policies set by the governing body.
I think the budgeting process from my perspective, or it should be actually from all the departments, is that it's a year-round process. I currently have on my desk right now a budget for the two thousand eighteen or two thousand nineteen, twenty year that I'm starting to prepare things that I need to have prepared or things that I want to do within the upcoming budget year. And I think department heads need to think that way also. This is the first time as far as within the community that I'm in, they've ever had, they've ever had a capital improvement plan. It's approximately right now seventy-seven pages and it's still being added to it, so they really haven't gone beyond really a draft. But it sets in motion for council and the rest of the staff that everybody is on the same page about what's about, what's about to take place for the upcoming year and. same page about what's about to take place for the upcoming year and future years, because it's not only showing what the capital improvements are, whether it's roads, whether you're going to be looking at raising water rates to do an improvement to put in a new water tower, whether you're looking at buying, it's a capital purchases plan also, so whether you have the funds available or what you need to do to buy that $500,000 vehicle for the fire department, or you look at as far as how you're going to do a replacement schedule for the computers. So it starts in the beginning, and I think in a perfect world is to have this capital improvement plan prepared so everybody on budget can see what do we have coming down the pipe for this coming year and future year. At the same time, you have a five-year plan basically with a budget. You have the prior year budget, the current year budget you're in, and then you're populating the information for the next three years. So you have five years in front of you, so everybody is on board and can see actually what's about to take place within the future. But at the same time, it's also important for the public to see that the municipal officials or the government is acting proactively and is prepared for the future by identifying what the needs are. They can look on there and find out what year their road's going to be worked on. Are they just going to be crack ceiling or are they going to be doing rehabilitation work on that particular road? Are you going to be working on your SCADA system for the DPW? Are you going to be doing something for your lift stations for this upcoming year? Are you doing something else at the treatment plant? What's going to happening with the DDA activities? So all of these things, I think, prepare you. So in the perfect world, you have that five-year, you have that multi-year capital improvement plan that not only shows what you're going to purchase, but also lists all the age-of-year vehicles. So it may have a page that shows, okay, these are five years of, or the last, when was the last year we purchased something? Fifteen years ago, so it may not be in five years, but in seven more years we're actually going to replace this road grader. I think it also identifies some outsourced funding methods that potentially you can get, whether it's funding through Act 51 where you're going to be funding the roads, or you're going to be using additional funds from the general fund, or you're potentially going to get grant dollars to fund some sort of sewer improvements or something else within the downtown or within the community.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kurzweil?
What do you see as the city manager's role in communicating with the press and the public? And how specifically do you plan to be successful in communicating with the public?
I think I maybe alluded a little bit that at the beginning was see and be seen. For one of the things that I always do within my community before, it's planning commission, zoning board appeals or city council, I need to be prepared before the meeting, but at the same time, what I'm usually doing is I'm usually walking that day, I'm running through the town or I'm riding my bike because I want to see things that I cannot normally see when I'm driving in a car. I want people to see the city manager, I want them to see the mad events, I want them to see that I'm their part of the community. But communicating with, whether it's the public, the businesses, the residents, I have to be a part of the activities that are taking place. And it's not only through social media, it's through the website, it's having an open-door policy that some people use perhaps too much, but it is having the ability for people to be able to come in. I think in my community, the majority of the people in the downtown businesses probably have my cell number, but I know they're only going to use it still hopefully when they really need me and contact me when they have a question. And I think when you start to open those lines of communication, people trust you more, people understand what's going on, and I think me being out there and conveying that also with the staff so they know that there's this policy that we are open. The culture is that people, we need to inform the public, we need to inform council, we need to keep people informed as to what's actually going on in the community, because sometimes the rumor mill or the grapevine can be a good thing, but sometimes it could get carried away and unfortunately the bad rumors get spread and you need to nip them in the bud right away. So sometimes it's having staff members that are familiar with social media when they're perhaps even on Facebook or doing Instagram or whatever it may be, they see some activities that are taking place. Hey, are you aware what's on Facebook today? They're making comments about this, and you need to nip it right away. So that is part of the job, I believe.
Thank you. Councilmember Richards?
The city is interested in improving its success in applying for, receiving and administering grants for important public city priorities. Could you please provide your experience in administering grants and how you would approach implementing a successful grant application and management plan for the city?
Well, I think the grants have to be as part of this culture that all the staff have to know that each one of you have a part in this, whether it's a clerk's office that has to look for opportunities to obtain grants for election equipment, whether it's a DPW that has to look for something that's out there even if it's for training, whether it's for police department that's out there looking for equipment or fire departments that's looking for turnout gear that they need to have. Experience that I've had and working with all the department heads, working with our additional staff that we have through our consultants, since I've been in the city of Linden, we've obtained over $2 million in grants, and that's within the last five years. First ones that we've obtained was the $900,000 grant that we got from SAW, which is the state of Michigan for the storm sewer and sanitary sewers. It had to do with the inspection and rehabilitation for what we need to do within the community. Unfortunately, it's not a sexy thing when you start talking about sanitary sewers and storm sewer underneath the ground, but it is part of the infrastructure that you need to be aware of. And when I talk about this capital improvement plan, it's important to understand what needs to be repaired underground, because what's the last thing that you want to do is put in a brand-new road in 2020, and in 2022, you're pulling up the road because you've got a cast iron water main that needs to be ductile iron water main that needs to be replaced. So that was the first one that we obtained. That was just over $900,000, and we only had to contribute 10% of that, so another $90,000 to get $900,000. It was definitely worth it. Most of the work was done through consultants or hire that we had that did the inspection or the lining or looked at, TV-ing most of our utility system, and identified plans for the future for what sanitary sewer, storm sewer that we needed to repair. One of the most recent ones we got was just last year, was just a $5,000 grant, but it was still $5,000 for replacement trees for our cemetery. We weren't planning on replacing those trees for another two years because the crabapple trees were dying. We set it in the project how we wanted to have it done. This became available. It was only through Consumers Energy. We spent probably $2,000 of our money, used $5,000 of theirs, and we replaced a whole set of trees at the lining in the cemetery. We got that done. It's a small grant, but it's still $5,000 that we didn't have to spend. Just this year, we're working on a project that received about $800,000 for a traffic improvement program, which administered through MDOT based upon each specific county, based upon needs for specific roads and based upon road conditions that are federal roads. It's an improvement of a road to Bridge Street that runs through our town. If you go through our town, you'll see the construction that's taking place, but because of that, it was $800,000 and it was a 20% match by us. It may not have been the most needed road within our town that needed to be replaced, but when you have the opportunity to get $800,000, it's an opportunity that you cannot pass up. So based upon that was another issue that we had with our capital improvement plan because we needed to replace water main underneath that, so we got that done as part of that project and redid it out. We received a $20,000 hazard mitigation grant, and that was for putting in a new tornado siren within town. We knew that needed to be upgraded and needed to be done within so many years, but based upon that, it only cost us $4,000 or $5,000, and we got $20,000 to put that new siren in at the optimal location in town, which the other one was not. We received another $20-plus thousand, or $19,000 for a generator at city hall. That generator helped power city hall, helps us anytime we have our power down and is prepared because we got it through Homeland Security in case something ever does happen for long periods of time. We have a power station in our town. One time it went out for almost a week. That was before I started there. We knew we needed to have something like that. You know, you can have backups for computers, you can have small generators that you can operate for pump stations, lift stations, for around-town operating some of your buildings, but when you have to run a whole city hall, people still have to pay bills, people still expect to communicate with the police department, the fire department still needs to operate, and things still need to happen. Those are the type of things that you need to prepare for. There's a lot of other minor grants that we've obtained, some happen to do through, excuse me, through community development block grant funds. Some of the times when you're obtaining funds, it has to do with being prepared. And for community development block grant, how it's administered through Oakland County, there are times that another excess funds become available. You need to have a project that is sometimes called shovel-ready, and even if it's a small sidewalk in front of the senior center, or if it's someone they're leading for putting in new doors at city hall, you have this identified, you're almost prepared with the budget, with the estimates, you know who you're going to go send something out to. It might not have been in this year's budget, it might have been in the future year, but you're prepared to have that. We've probably obtained maybe five or six small $500 or $1,000 grants through Genesee County through their police and fire, where we've gotten turnout gear, we've gotten vests and other small things, but it was being prepared, excuse me, being at the right place at the right time when some of these things are there. And when you start to talk with staff and say, we need to start researching grants, what are some of the things that you need within your department? They know, you put them in touch with certain areas, you tell them to talk with other officers or other personnel who are part of their associations, ask them where they obtain them, and sometimes it's just being at the right place at the right time, getting, it's a timing thing, you've got 30 days to fill this out, let's do it. And sometimes you have to make a budget adjustment in order to get it done, but sometimes it's worth it. Getting $20,000, you know, to put in a generator when it only costs you $5,000 and you didn't think you were going to get it right away, but the opportunity was there, you have to seize the moment.
Thank you. Question number seven. Please describe the process you would utilize to recruit and select talented staff.
I think in reviewing, and if it's me coming into the position now, it's difficult to say how operations are or how potentially I would have to change it, but let's say if I'm in a given case where I know existing staff and I know how people are operating, using existing job descriptions, of course, is the first thing, so hopefully those are up to date, because that is something that's definitely needed in order if you're going to be looking for somebody. I think reviewing those job descriptions with the employee who is currently there, I think, and having people leave, you have to have exit interviews, so if you're training, if you're about to hire somebody, most likely either A, it's either a new position or somebody who had just left. Having that exit interview and talking with them about the proper things, asking them what, did they have the necessary tools to do their job? Did they feel their job changed at all within the last so many years? Were they prepared for their job? Would they consider needing additional training? So I think in looking at that, having the description, using certain municipal available locations such as GovUSA perhaps, or a Michigan Municipal League, or whatever, Michigan Township Association, to recruit those individuals, and having a proper description, but having the culture in place at city hall where you want people to apply for the job is important. If people are coming there and they do not, they hear bad things about that municipality, those are the things that you have to change in advance because you want to recruit good people. So you need to make sure that that is in place, the proper pay scale or adjustment need to be done, and I think talking with staff, getting feedback, perhaps maybe some things may change between clerk's office, treasurer's office, billing clerk, DPW, or who's handling specific job duties, talking with their supervisor to get their input as well as other staff. I think you lay all of those things on the table and all of those have an input and be able to recruit somebody.
Thank you. Councilmember Kennedy?
Collaboration and community involvement is important to the city. Please describe how you would plan to professionally collaborate with the other organizations in the community and how you would plan to personally become involved in the community.
Collaboration, I think, has to start from the beginning of me or another individual working within a community. I think trying to meet with individuals is important. I think when you start to meet with the school system, talking with them, are there ways that we can, you know, share services? I mean, you have people within the building or where their, you know, copy expenses, are there other parking lot improvements, are there other things, improvements to the HVAC system or whatever it may be? So on this segment of just that city hall, there's so many potential opportunities to collaborate with the school system because they are within the same building. But then you start to look at other municipal entities. Are there ways that we can collaborate or partner, whether it has to do with purchasing of items? I mean, there's my deal that you would use for the state of Michigan for buying items, that's always good, but maybe if you're looking at purchasing a piece of equipment that you only use one month out of the year, and the adjoining community will use 11 months out of the year, not necessarily always at the same time, there's an opportunity to share something like that. But I think collaborating, meeting the different people within the community, and they know what city hall is all about, and I talk a little bit about that culture, and trying to introduce myself, trying to work with them, partner for community events, people that need to know that my background or that I'm passionate about historic preservation, that I want to preserve the downtown, or this will just become anywhere USA if we just start taking down buildings and taking down historic structures and then every single Walgreens or everybody puts in, you know, a new building. I often talk about in some towns that I've worked in in the past that we need to preserve our community because, and you need to have those things in place, whether you follow the Department of Interior standards, because if you don't have those things in place, you can get Owens Corning fiberglass in and they want to put up a pink building, it doesn't match in anything else with your paint structures for your downtown. But I think working with those individuals, learning how to partner, and whether it's with the school system, whether it's a local municipality. We had worked, when I was in Rochester Hills, we had worked with two different school systems and the DPW about locating a repair garage for DPW for repairing all the vehicles. So between the Rochester schools, Avondale schools and the city of Rochester Hills, we worked on getting a location in town where we could all have our repairs of all the vehicles, the buses, the DPW vehicles and everything, and to work that out. Unfortunately, it didn't go through at the end because they had to change over in mayor and because we had some difficulties with union contracts because different people were working for different unions and we couldn't get them all to agree on the same thing. But those are opportunities that are always there, and I think it's important that we always look at those, and it could be anything from buying items from Walgreens to, you know, to getting flu shots for Walgreens for the all employees. If you have just enough employees with us and you partner with another entity in town, that can happen, whether it's a manufacturing facility or whatever it may be. I hope that wasn't too much of a run-on sentence and I answered all your items.
That's good. Thanks. Councilmember Parisian?
If someone were to Google search you, what would they find regarding your past public positions, and is there any information or background you would like to provide regarding the publicly available information about you?
They would probably see videos and photographs, so I'm not necessarily that's a good thing, but I think in looking at some of the things that they would, if they do in fact Google me, they'll probably find some things that I didn't when I was working in different communities. One of them was when I was working in, I think I was working in Lake Orion when I went down to Hattiesburg, Mississippi and helped rebuild a school that was damaged by Hurricane Katrina. They're going to follow, and unfortunately, those are the things that come up because there's photographs. And there was another thing where we partnered with probably eight or 10 other organizations and municipalities within Oakland County when we delivered supplies after the tornadoes hit within Joplin. So they'll probably find those things. They'll find some other Paul Zellin, actually. I found out that there was another Paul Zellin that actually worked for Wayne County within the treasurer's office. When I was working in Garden City, I kept meeting people, oh, I've heard a lot about you, and I didn't know what they were talking about, because I'd only been there six months. And then I finally met that individual down at Wayne County, and I introduced myself. I came to the office and I gave him my card and they looked at me like kind of funny and I got the opportunity to meet him, so his name comes up on some things also. And I'm not the shooting Paul Zellin, like when the guy's in Ohio, that's one of all kind of shooting contests. But I think they'll find out that if you look at the videos or look at the photographs, you found out that I'm a community-minded individual, that I'm not just about me, I'm just about being in the community, being involved, being within activities. I think there's a video that's up there that I did when I was departing Lake Orion, and I think if it doesn't come out within this setting, whether it's the public or whether it's you and you want to find out about me, look at those videos. I mean, talk to people and, you know, ask them about who I was, but I think you can get a general idea of who I am and who I was at that particular time that those things were put on the internet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parisian. Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
If you're selected as the next city manager, what do you predict your tenure would be?
My tenure?
Yeah.
At least tenure.
Yeah.
At least 10 years.
Is that a gag?
Well, I was playing on words there, so yeah, I guess I partially was, but no, I mean, I plan on staying long-term. I want to work within a community that really wants me, someplace that I can grow and continue to make an impact on a community. I've always done that where I've worked. I mean, when I first started this, when I was working in Linden, I saw an opportunity for improvement. Immediately drove through town, started to talk to people about things, saw six different types of light posts with eight different types of globes on the top of the thing, like, I think we can make improvements here. And being the DDA director also, and having worked within planning and community development, we were able to improve on ordinances within the community. development, we were able to improve on ordinances within the community, and I think as long as you're continually doing that, and you're happy, and obviously, opportunities sometimes present themselves that you don't really expect, this one, this one obviously did. And I think being able to do some of those things to further your who you are and what is the impact that you've left. I mean, this most recent thing that I've done just within Linden is I'm, because I went through training for redevelopment-ready community, so therefore, I've gone through that training, and actually, I take that wherever I go now, so I can actually assist businesses and through assistance with council, developing resolutions and some other things that businesses can actually obtain funding. Oh, it suddenly got louder here, I think the cooling system went off. You can actually attain funds through the MEDC that might not normally be available. We had a business or person that come into town, and it's been five years since I started conversations with this individual about coming to our community. She wanted to be a part of the community. She graduated from college, she got her degree she in within dentistry, she moved to look, she wanted to locate within town, she was looking for locations within the community. She found a spot at the same time we were talking about another piece of vacant property that was that was vacant for seven or eight years. She now has, she purchased that property just a couple of years ago, we just went through site plan approval within the last two years, just within the past month, they've gotten approval for funds through the state of Michigan through the MEDC because we were redevelopment-ready community, and I'm talking about, it's about a 15,000 square foot building that was approximately $3 million. She's potentially getting close to 20% of the money from MEDC to assist with that particular development. But at the same time, we were able to work with the state of Michigan MEDC, so she could potentially get a tax break in that on development through Public Act 255, and now she'll have partial taxes for going forward for the next 12 years, but that helped her put in that bill that building within our downtown. That building is a game changer for our town downtown, where that property has been vacant for 11 years after a building burned down, it was a travesty for our particular downtown, but it's had vacant for so many years. There was a gas leak that was in town, it permeated through the soils and is now on that on that property also, and because we were working with the DEQ, she now is be able to install a vapor mitigation system on that particular site, so that assisted her with the development, and it took a lot of components, it took a lot of years, but it prepared her and us for now a new development that everybody, I think, is really going to be proud of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Usually, these are one-way interviews, and you need to interview the community as much as the community needs to interview, and through the process, we do more of it, but not at this first stage, but this is an opportunity, if you have a question for the mayor about the South Lion, now would be a time if you'd like to to ask anything for the mayor to address.
Well, if I can, whether it's through you being the chair or through each individual, I'd like to get all of your opinion on what do you see as your immediate goals for the city manager? What would you see to like, what would you like them to bring to the community? Is that too long?
No, not at all. No, no, that, no, this is perfect. It's a great question. There are some immediate things that need to be addressed. I think you hit on a lot of the things that this community is not only looking for but is in need of. Leadership from the top, you talked about assessing and readdressing job duties at times in in the City Hall staff, working towards possibly a change of morale in that building, and what people in the community think about it. Working with the communities around us as they grow, while our infrastructure obviously deals with their growth, you know, these are all things that need to be addressed sooner than later. We're looking to take advantage or finally take a step over this potential cliff that we've been on and looking to climb into this potential that's been right on the cusp of us for a while. So it's, there's a lot of things to do, we have some vacancies in some department heads that are that's would need to be addressed immediately. Communication is key, and really, we're looking for leadership. I love the C or B scene, or in B scene, that's incredibly important, too, here. This is a small community. You know, it's it's easy to get confused with the township and the city and and the other Green Oak and Salem township that are around, but the city itself is 3.7 miles, and it would be great to be seeing a city manager throughout the town and outseeing the businesses and knowing that they have a line of communication with that individual. Those are all incredibly important things that are need to be would need to be addressed ASAP. And also, sorry to keep adding on this, but I, and I think it's important that we keep the character and the charm of the city that we have and build on that with our DDA, and that's that's something that we've seen, the potential and some and some steps in that direction. But we've seen this community grow quite a bit, and we got some people that are on board with that, we got some people that maybe aren't so much on board with that, so so getting everyone on the same page with that going forward is incredibly important, too. So, communication.
Will any of the other members answer, too, or do you want to just leave it to you, Chair? I mean, that's up to you.
We'll, we'll try and keep it contained for now, Paul.
Okay.
We'll have opportunity to explore the other council members throughout the process.
Okay.
If I may, I'd like to offer you three to five minutes now to give a statement to the city council that your interest in the position, why it's exciting to you, and something to leave them with during this process as they consider the next candidates to move forward.
Well, I think first, and thanking everybody for the opportunity to come here today, it's extremely important to me that you allowed that to occur. I I want people to know that myself as a manager, I am perhaps different than maybe other managers because I've worked my way up through different departments. I've know, I've known other managers that have been very successful, that have come in through the Finance Department, through the Police Department, through through other areas, but I believe my specific training is very unique. I think working in engineering, obtaining assessing certification, I'm a licensed residential builder, doesn't mean I I build, but I try to obtain knowledge to be able to, if I'm going to be working within the Building Department, I want to be able to talk with my staff about some of these things. I think with having specific training and education, working on strategic planning, having to run a city, small cities, larger cities, being able to work on within the DDA, Community Development Department, planning, rewriting ordinances, having the ability to communicate with the public, and I mean, and communicate with the public is just about anything and everything. I think when I, you know, a normal day, you have to, you can wear many hats as a city manager, whether I'm working in the office and preparing information for our council agenda, or going out to the third grade class in the month of March for Read Across America to read I Want a Iguana with a third grade class, or coming back into the office and, you know, meeting with and talking with the city attorney about something, or being able to, you know, be prepared for maybe perhaps a resident or woman who has some damaged flowers in her yard because there was a stop box leak at one of the locations, but then going back to the DPW and saying, okay, what do we have an issue now, we're dealing with, you know, a piece of a road equipment. I think the knowledge that I've obtained obtained, working in the specific departments is is specific enough and affords me the opportunity to be able to speak somewhat eloquently enough with which Ethan, each individual department, when each one of those departments are talking to me about specific needs moving forward, talking about budgeting, talking about staffing, that I can ask the pertinent questions instead of just saying yes. If I just came from, you know, a financial background, I may not, I may only be able to answer those questions regarding finances and not necessarily be asked questions about, okay, this, you know, the, why are we, you know, working on repairing this particular road instead of this particular section, and how come we're not working to be crack selling this over this this year, are we going to wait two years to put in a contract? I think I've prepared myself for those things. I think my unique experience working within Oakland County, I know your engineers through HRC, I know attorneys through Johnson and Rosati, I know Carmen, your planner, I've met him several times over the years at various presentations or other events around the county or around the state. I've worked at the Traffic Improvement Association, which I know you guys are involved in also. I think the knowledge that I have within Oakland County is extremely important and unique to this particular perspective within the position. There's a lot of things that make up who I am, and I almost didn't touch on one of the items, but I guess I'll bring it up now, yes, about something else you may Google. You may Google my name and you may find out something about Elmo, that's because I'm Elmo in a regular Christmas parade that's occurred probably for the last 15 years, so that may come up picture, that may come up also. But that's the type of person that I am, that I'm going to get involved in those activities within your community, and that's who I am, and that's who I've always been, and that's who I'll continue to be. You know, I may have to put this hat on that I have to be the, going through discipline and, you know, if they wanted the employees, but I think at the same time, when you develop a respect amongst the employees, they understand who you are, they know the trust, they know that I'm coming from a basis, so you're having, you know, good convictions about what I'm trying to do, that I'm moral and ethical and based upon what's going on here at the city, I think I'll gather more trust as you move forward. And having those one-on-one meetings or having those department meetings, or whether it's, you know, setting some morale-boosting things within City Hall, and whether it's just, you know, perhaps having lunch with a group of people or buying pizza for one of the groups or within the office, or having a casual day that's geared towards opening day of the Tigers or the Michigan Michigan State game, or having a cookout or preparation of something for Thanksgiving, just to try to get the people to bond together and to understand that we're all in this, and that, hey, this guy maybe isn't too bad, he's not just going to be, you know, not just to be a manager, because I'm the type of manager that's the first one here and the last one to leave. I'm not the person, the manager, I used to have a manager that used to come in late, and I think he felt that if he left early, that made up for it, so he was, you know, going both ways, but that's not, leading by example is important, and I think that's the type of manager that I am, and I think the communication ability that I have, I think the public would see that, and, you know, I think, you know, often the chief that's here, if he wants to talk to my prior to couple of police chiefs, he can do that to find out the type of ethical individual that I am, because I'm proud of that, I'm proud of what I've done within the communities, I'm proud of how I've moved forward, and proud of how or what I've accomplished over the years, and I would, I would bring that to this community as well.
Thank you.
Great, well, thank you very much for your time this evening, it was much appreciated. That concludes our interviews, I will walk the candidate out. I would suggest we take maybe a very brief two to three, five-minute break at most.
Okay.
Use the restroom if you like. I do have some facilitation suggestions for a discussion. I also know that the mayor and I have had the opportunity to talk to the council member Parisian who left, and an opportunity to continue our discussion after our break. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. By the way, this was my blue tongue, that's even though it matches, it's.
Thank you very much, wonderful.
Okay, thank you very much for applying. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, yes, sir, nice meeting you.
It's a pleasure to meet you.
Yes, Paul.
Good pleasure.
Very nice meeting you. Hey, and that Elmo thing doesn't blow up anything, so.
It's odd because people know me now, and I go through the parade, and people make know that's me, or the voice word of my family was that you, because you're not allowed to talk.
Yes, okay. That's no deal breaker.
I hear they serve that at some of the establishments in town.
I knew it was going to be a marathon, so.
Well, yeah, that was a given, so.
Bathroom's free, Carl.
Well, I sure wish that Mary and Rose would have been able to hang tight, so we would have been one step in the right direction, you know.
She stayed as long as she could.
Oh, yeah, no, I get that.
And she, and we'll talk about it in a change of pace, but I have some information that she's going to share and want to go over it. They can read it on the web, they can do it on the web. Never mind, I'll, well, I did it, but, okay, I'll tell her to sit. Rose, I messaged you and everything.
Okay. Hi there.
We have, I think we're sitting, here. Do we have room?
Oh, yeah.
Please, I can, yeah, it's because I don't want to.
We're going to do that next up, 100.3.
Did you have it?
Thanks.
I told you she's the first daughter, so I totally have that parade for her every year.
I like that last line. I just want to be the grand marshal one time.
I know. That's funny.
You know, I stepped in at the house just to change because I work with chemo, and studies show that it's hot, so I never wear my, I never wear my clothes everywhere, so.
So you have five children, right? Who are you?
Yeah, I can't, you know, clothes hole, Mike, I feel bad. It's not right.
Nope, I, I try to get out of my.
Do you appreciate the lack of chemo?
Well, just the whole idea of work clothes.
Yeah.
Different issue.
No, I get it, so.
Are there any comments?
Oh, well, we will have to, when we come a moment to stand.
What?
I guess I'm just going to take a moment to stand. Oh, yeah.
No, I, I have a round.
Oh, me, too.
So, you're behind the torch.
Yeah.
So, it's not just, I know.
Yeah, so I purposely park two miles away, and I do it.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, but it's raining, I need to get here, I'm like, let's get on the bus, it's fine.
So you work, you have, where are you from?
They usually park a little bit farther, but I'm right here.
Okay.
How do you get there?
It's very nice.
All year round?
I did, all year round, and it, last year it was in like 15 DUIs.
So nice when that C goes off.
I know. It's so loud.
Long period of time.
That's good for you.
Physically.
It was clear.
Yeah, it's really nice.
That's Janice Richard.
Got that mixed up with my stuff here. I'm sorry.
You okay, Carl?
Yeah.
Long story.
Think you'll like this resume.
Mr. Patrino, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I appreciate everyone's time this evening. Um, and I welcome Councilmember Walton joining us. Also noted that Councilmember Parison has exited, but I believe she has left notes with the mayor at his request from her, from the interview discussion. Um, at this time, it, it... This is really City Council's opportunity to move forward in the process how you would like. Um, though the mayor has asked that I give some suggested facilitation to get through this part of the process. Um, I do not take offense if you choose to discuss it in another manner or if you choose to do it another way. Um, this is your process, your community and your candidates. Um, I do wanna to really stress, and I can't stress this enough. The goal is to get to a number of candidates that you wanna bring back for a second interview scheduled now for August 24th. That is the goal. Um, we have suggested three candidates, but now you have seen five. If you wish to do four, if you wish to do three, if you say we know our one and it's over, so be it. Um, but our process was to get to approximately three for the 24th. Um, I would not recommend... The only thing I will not recommend is forwarding two candidates. Um, because there is always a potential you will have a drop candidate. Um, and you don't want to have, have that situation. Um, so one is fine, three is fine, four is fine. Um, I think three is a... Provides a nice framework that you can time public interaction, some more casual conversation with the candidates, and maybe open up a little more free questioning. Uh, because, and the candidates will expect that they take a tour and understand the community a little bit further. Um, with having said that, um, my suggested facilitation, and again, only a suggestion, would be if, if councilmembers are comfortable reviewing their notes and choosing three candidates they're most interested in and, and just saying those that they're most interested in. You can quickly find if you have quick alignment. Um, if you do, then we can proceed. If you don't, then I think it is important that you open the floor up and discuss and debate so you can get to, um, a majority of members that agree on the candidates you'd like to bring forward. Um, that is one option. My suggested facilitated option. The other option is you, you don't do it this evening. You schedule another meeting to try and think on it, to consider it more clearly, um, and then come back and, and have a discussion and choose your candidates. This is your process. Um, and the third option is ignore both of those and just have a, a discussion of the candidates. I, I least recommend number three simply because our goal is not to pick the best candidate. Um, this is a, a live meeting. It is being recorded. Candidates will be aware of, of everything that has happened in the proceedings. And our goal is to identify candidates that we want to attract to be here for our assumed second round interviews. Um, are there any questions on my suggested A facilitation or were any of these suggestions I just offered?
Does not appear so.
Okay. Um, I turn it to you, Mayor. If, if, and if you do have the straw poll suggestion of who are the, the three that you'd like back, I will record that. This is not a vote. This is a discussion and a straw poll. I'm looking at the city attorney as I'm saying that. The vote will only occur at the end when you actually invite by name the candidates. So I leave it to you for... Yes?
I have a quick question for you, Mr. Patrino. Would you like to us to refer to the candidates by number or by name?
Um, name is fine.
Okay.
Because I've lost track of the old numbers.
Okay.
But we're, we're public now. Um, as one of the candidates did mention, the old compressed did, did print the names and qualifications of your candidates um, in about eight hours on their online, um, publication. So at this point, it's, it's fair game.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Richards, you have a question?
Um, yes. Um, Mr. Patrino, are we halfway out of confidentiality now? Or are we still in full confidentiality with all of this?
We are out. The, the candidates that you interviewed this evening and their resumes have been provided to the public. Their names and their answers this evening are public information. So for the five candidates you've reviewed, they're public candidates for this position.
Okay, all right. From this point on, okay.
And I will also say that, that the candidates you reviewed in resume form only, that not these five candidates, the other candidates that were applicants, those we still need to respect their confidentiality because they were not informed and they were not selected past the resume. Um, uh, resume piece.
So we can publicly speak about those that were here tonight.
Yeah. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
I think that's important.
Okay. Well, I think we have a lot to discuss this evening. Is there anyone that would like to lead it off? Or, or I will. Okay. Well, um... This has been on my mind for quite a bit. Um, this is an exciting day. Um, there's a lot to go over here. Um, when I started today, I wanted to make sure that we were thorough. Um, everyone was gonna get everything they could out of this to make the best decision. Um, when I started today, I was convinced that we were gonna ask three of these candidates to return. I will stick with that. Um, and so I think the three candidates we should ask to return are Paul Zelenek, Tracy Kay... Sorry, I didn't write down her full name.
Hope Lars.
Thank you, Glenn. And Thomas Scrobolo. So that was, it was, uh, one, two, and five on the interview list. Um, and I'm, I'm pretty solid on that. Councilmember Kivell, sorry, I missed you.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming in. I thought they all were very, did a very responsible and respectable job. Um, but I do concur with your, the people that you had thought uh, to move forward to the next round of this. Um, there, there was just... There was just a great deal more solidity to their statements. They seemed to have a, a grasp of a much more, a broader scope and understanding of every element that was going to be necessary to be acted on in the, the duties that'll end up being, uh, our city manager. So, uh, yeah. So, I mean, if we're not doing something tonight, then I, I think that's the way to go.
I quickly wanted to, I jumped the gun there. I needed to thank everyone for coming out too because I wanna thank everyone that applied and I wanna thank everyone that came out tonight because that is not easy. Um, and, and I, everyone did a great job. But these were the three that I felt stood out to me. So did anyone else have anything to add to that? Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Uh, at the risk of being a little redundant, those, uh, those are the same three candidates that I have ranked here. The other two candidates, uh, you know, I, uh, the first three would be fully capable of, uh, hitting the ground running, having held similar positions in other municipalities. The other two basically had, uh, positions that I would term to be second tier. I think the learning curve would be a little, uh, a little more prolonged than, uh, the one that we need to, uh, to, to have here, where somebody can come out of the gate running and, uh, begin executing ASAP. So those are the three candidates that I'd like to have back for a little more in-depth discussion.
Run that by me again now. Thomas Scobolo?
Yep. And then...
Tracy Koblerz.
Tracy, she went second.
Okay.
And then Paul.
Tell him that's last. Okay. Personally, I kinda like Bruce Thompson a little bit there, but my, my favorite is Zelenek, okay?
So you would go...
I don't know.
I'm just, I'm giving you, just trying to hear you out here. So you're, you like Paul and you like Bruce? Did you have a third?
Zelenek, Paul Zelenek's my number one, okay? The, the Linden man, okay? Uh, then I liked, uh, Thompson, uh, Bruce Thompson, uh... Now, wait a minute. Was he... Four, five, let's see. He was one of, one of, wasn't he? Bruce Thompson?
Yes.
He was one of them?
Yep.
Okay.
He went, uh, fourth, I believe.
Okay. And, uh, Scrobolo.
Okay. So you're thinking...
Just Bruce Thompson's the only different one that I...
Okay. Instead of Tracy. Okay.
Yeah.
Did you guys catch that?
Yeah, I go with Tracy, huh?
Okay. Hang on. Are you... We, we're only gonna pick three, Carl, so...
Okay.
So did you want Bruce or Tracy on that three? It's up to you.
Yeah, I want those two up. Scratch Scrobolo then.
Okay, so then you...
Okay, Tracy. Okay, we got...
Let me make sure you got this right, buddy. And then, so you were thinking it would be Paul, Tracy, and Bruce then?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, correction there. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Kurtswell, do you have any comments?
No. I, I think that, uh, very briefly, I would like to thank all the candidates that applied. Uh, and would like to thank the candidates that appeared tonight and interviewed. I think it takes a lot of courage. You're coming into a city that, you know, you really don't know anybody. Um, you've only heard about us. And, uh, you're making a pretty big life change, um, somewhere down the line.
Uh, I would have to agree with, uh, the mayor. Uh, I think that the mayor is very astute in the selection that he has made. Uh, I also had time over the weekend to look at the resumes. In fact, I studied the resumes very deeply and, and have relied maybe in some cases a little bit more on the resume than I actually did the interview. So, um, but I came out with these individuals. Um, so I would agree with Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtswell. Um, I do have paperwork left here from Councilmember Parison. Would you like me to disclose that? Should I just turn that in?
Well, Mayor, I, I think you can maybe grab comment from Councilmember Walton. And then I don't, we don't need to turn in, uh, Councilmember Parison. If you want to, if, if you, if you would like to speak to which candidate she preferred, you may. It looks like we're going to get to a majority of four, at least of four member coalescing around three candidates without her information. I leave it to your discretion after... I would recognize Councilmember Walton.
Okay.
And then move forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Walton, if you have any comments, please feel free.
Um, yes, I do actually. I would like to apologize for my lateness tonight. I, you know, work schedules do get in the way. But I did have a chance to review the, um, candidates and their resumes over the weekend. And I have to agree that those three individuals that you guys all seem to all like from their interview process had outstanding resumes and would have been on my top picks. So I'm gonna go with the flow here and say Paul, um, Thomas, and Tracy are in my running.
All right. Um, well, with that then, I will, um, not disclose Councilmember Parison's list. I don't think it's a big deal. Um, and we have what... We have our, we have our three.
I motion to bring those folks in.
Hang on. Councilmember Kurtswell?
Is it, is it the mayor's, uh, desire to have a motion at this time?
No. Yes, please.
Okay. Um, I move to invite back for a second interview as to the city manager's position, the following individuals. Thomas Scrobolo, Tracy Koblerz, and Paul Zelenek.
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes?
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I want, I need to apologize and correct myself. I believe I said August 24th earlier. Uh, the date we have pre-planned for the potential second interview is, um, August 23rd. Um, we will confirm that with the city. The city will obviously advertise as appropriate. Um, and I know we were looking for the week of August 20th. I had communicated with the mayor. Um, two of the candidates had issue on that first August 20th date. I had provided the candidates that week and asked all five their availability just so we would have this information. Uh, that is how we coalesce around August 23rd. Uh, but we will, um, make that more public. I encourage you to advertise that. Um, I also encourage us to set some time aside, and we've discussed this before the interviews, for the candidates to have an opportunity to interact with, with more public that I hope we receive. So my goal would be to get that firm, the time, so that you can invite the public. Um, and maybe we have a few more comment cards provided. Um, we did receive one comment card, um, and it was in support of candidate number five, who was, um, Mrs. Zelenek, who wasn't in your list. So that is my, um, apologies for the error, but it's August 23rd and we will get a schedule to the city as soon as possible so that you can begin advertising. And we will also begin the final reference, I'm sorry, the final background checks on the three candidates, uh, that you've designated. This is the deeper level of education and, um, confirming education, confirming employment, confirming, um, uh, criminal background and drivers. Um, so we will have that data on the candidates. We will, we will disclose a general report on that data, um, not in detail.
Okay. Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Patrino, um, how important is this Google, uh, research that they talk about? I don't know much about it, but I've heard about it. How important is that?
Uh, I, I appreciate the question. It, there's two without, you know, the candidates can hear this. The, one of the reasons we ask them is their self-awareness. Are they aware of what their public persona is? That was the question that we had asked. Um, Google and the news tracking agencies and the opportunity to see what people's paths are is very powerful. And you wanna make sure that your city manager understands the impression they leave with the community. Um, so it's important that they be aware, um, of their presence and what the greater world will... Because people will now Google these candidates. Um, and they will tell you what they find. So the candidates better be aware of it and, and understand the publicness of this job. That's the purpose.
Will we have an opportunity to look at this, okay? What you find on Google?
Um, we won't disclose our Google searches necessarily. I have Googled the candidates, so I understand what I find. I would encourage you to though. Um, it's not a part of our formal background check. We stick to the professional background pieces.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Kurtswell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to, uh, ask, uh, I, I don't know for close, but I hope we're close to picking somebody, you know, in, on August 24th. Uh, are we...
23rd or May.
The 23rd, okay. Are we, are working towards an employment agreement or where's that going? Because I would think, I would, I would feel more comfortable having something, uh, starting rather than doing it on the 23rd. I, I think it shows that we're planning ahead. We're ready for this new city manager. Um, and I really don't want an employment agreement to be holding things up when it'd be nice to have them here before Labor Day. If possible.
That, excellent question in terms of pre- Excellent question in terms of pre-doing an employment agreement. I'm... Would... If that is a desire of the council or a majority of the council, my suggestion is that I work with the city attorney and if you would like the mayor, but I can work with the city attorney on a sample employment agreement. The employment agreement will be a two-way negotiation with the finalists that you select. But we can certainly, if you have an employment agreement that you've used in the past, or we can provide samples that are fair to both sides for the city attorney to start the process. That would be my recommendation. And that's where we start. If... And I'd like a motion to that effect. If city council would like me to start the process with the city attorney to frame out an employment agreement.
I'll make a motion that we approve the idea that Mr. Vetrano and Tim Wilhelm will end up creating an employment agreement that we can review and comment on.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Now, while we're going to go through just quickly the rest of the agenda here quickly, at this point, we'll open it up for public comment. Please state your name and address.
Ryan Lehrer, 716 Grand Court. Just wanted to thank all the candidates that came out tonight. They did an amazing job. It was a wonderful evening. Glad I was a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lehrer. At this point, if anyone has any council comments, please go ahead and raise a hand. I think we have all kind of... Councilmember Kennedy, please go ahead.
I'd just like to remind the community about the Blues, Brews, and Brats event this Saturday at the parking lot across from the fire hall, put on by the Chamber of Commerce.
Yes, thank you. Great reminder. Does anyone else have anything to add this evening?
Okay.
With that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good evening, everyone. Great session, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Great session.